Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Planning Board's Ad hoc Committee on Site Plan Review. This was a publicly noticed meeting of this ad hoc committee of the Planning Board. The public meeting is the latest event in a process that began in January when Princeton Council abolished the Site Plan Review Advisory Board. Council tasked the Planning Board with investigating alternatives to SBRAB, and the Board created an ad hoc committee composed of Julie Capizoli, Alvin McGowan, who is not with us tonight, Owen O'Donnell, and Tim Quinn, yours truly. Our charge has been to investigate and suggest a public process that complements and supplements the work and expertise of Princeton's professional staff and municipal consultants in the review of site plans prior to their submission to the Planning Board for consideration at a public meeting. This committee is met with attorneys for the Planning Board and the attorney for the municipality, the former director of planning and the current senior planner, Justin Lesko, who's with us tonight, the land use engineer and zoning officer to hear their perspectives. Notes of all of our meetings have been distributed to our colleagues on the Planning Board. Those notes and what we hear tonight from members of the public will inform an eventual report and recommendations to be reviewed by the Planning Board. To be clear, tonight is a listening session for members of the ad hoc committee. This is being recorded and as such, for the benefit of our colleague Alvin McGowan, and I expect that it will be on the municipal YouTube site. So, we'd like to keep a public comment within the three-minute timeframe that is standard for Planning Board meetings. So, if you wish to speak, I would ask that if you're an attendee and you wish to speak, there are eight people in the queue. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand using the raise hand icon at the bottom. I do not have the actual script that we read before Planning Board meetings, so I'm kind of winging it a little bit here. If you hit the raise hand icon, Justin will bring you over, and we would ask that you turn your camera on and just state your name for the record. And then tell us, you know, how you feel about the site plan review process. I know that there was a request from a member of council that we review the thinking behind the abolishment of the previous Site Plan Review Advisory Board. I must confess that I'm not totally comfortable doing that. That was a council decision. We did discuss at the Planning Board and had a public hearing as part of an ordinance referral, but this was not the... The Planning Board did not initiate the disbanding of SBRAB, and we were not consulted in the crafting of the ordinance that eventually passed at council. For the purposes of the ad hoc committee, that was an action that was already passed, and we were focused on alternatives. So, with that said, I see Mr. Berlin has his hand up. Justin, could you bring him over? No one's being sworn in. I'm sorry, Mr. O'Donnell has his hand up.
Yeah, Tim, I would just like to, I don't know if a formal motion is called for in this case, but perhaps we can suspend the strict three-minute limit on public comment. You know, we'll ask people to be as concise as possible and to the point. And if they ramble, we can interject our own, you know, prodding to wrap up. But I think that we don't necessarily need to hold the citizens to a three-minute timeframe.
That point is well taken, and I would like to delegate you as Sergeant at Arms if someone goes over what you think is a reasonable time, but the point is well taken. So, with that, Justin, if you'd bring Mr. Berlin over, if you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand, and you'll be brought over and given a reasonable amount of time to state your opinion. So, Mr. Berlin, you've been brought over. Thank you for turning your camera on, and thank you for attending this meeting. And the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you very much for holding this meeting. I found out about it about 55 minutes ago, so I'm just stumbling in. I have other obligations tonight, so I was very quick to raise my hand. And I was the fellow who asked for that background. I respect and understand why you're uncomfortable giving it, but it's a little perplexing to us out here in the public arena as to how this all came about. I have some idea.
If I could just interrupt for a second and ask Mr. Lesko if he's comfortable summarizing council's thinking in abolishing the Site Plan Review Advisory Board, maybe he's more comfortable than I am.
Certainly. Yeah, there were some concerns that had been bubbling up about how the Site Plan Review Advisory Board interacted with the state municipal land use law and just the way that we, you know, send site plan approvals through our land use boards. And on top of that, there were questions just about how it strayed, but, you know, from its original intention, but more so, it was just kind of these legal curiosities.
Thanks. I think I'm going to be within that three minutes. I know there's a dinner waiting for me down there, so that's why I raised my hand so quickly. But let me, I'll just share my thoughts about this. They all proceed from the conviction that it's good to have an oversight group of some kind that's made up of members of the community. And because those members of the community by definition have a stake in the built form of the community, and department professionals, super valuable, helpful people who don't necessarily live here, necessarily have a different set of duties and obligations. So, I can imagine a complimentary panel of some kind. And frankly, the department professionals would be derelict in their duties if they failed to provide very active assistance to applicants, which is kind of by definition not critical, right? It's like being this helpful hired person. So, I've thought about this just a little bit, but I thought that, you know, as a professional architect in town, I've done a number of applications to different boards. I just recently did two concept reviews with the HPC, and they're so helpful. They're so helpful. And they're helpful to everyone because they get the application out there, you know, into the public arena. And they also inform the applicant early on before he's all invested with money and time and emotionally also invested in the project to get a sense of what the community is looking for. And to me, these reviews would then occur early in the process, and they'd be obligatory. You gotta do it. These could be relatively informal sessions that would, as I said, be helpful to the applicant because they would have a sense then of how their proposal might be best crafted to fit well in this community before investing all this time and money and emotion in soft costs, which can be really high. And I remember when I was Chair of SBRAB years ago, we'd get applications that like really thick, big plans with electrical and power and lighting and landscaping. And it was done. It was as though they were done. And so, you know, it would pain me to empathize with the applicant's position in those situations. The panel would, this is important. The panel would have to rigorously refer to the language of the master plan in all of their deliberations, and also in the report that they would write with observations and recommendations to the Planning Board or to the zoning board. So, I'm imagining a concept review that's kind of informal. It's pretty freewheeling. People have an investor on it. But it needs to be grounded in the written statement of purpose that this community has crafted for itself. It needs to refer to that rigorously. Obviously, this depends a lot on the personalities of the people involved and everything, but that really, I would think, needs to be a requirement in fairness to the applicant, frankly. So, it's not arbitrary, is what I'm saying. So, this early concept review and the accompanying report would allow the public early on to be aware of a pending application, and so they might better prepare to participate in future open public hearings where there's an opportunity for public comment, which has never been the case at SBRAB reviews and probably shouldn't be the case either at this kind of concept review. So, I'm going to sum up and say this. These suggestions all flow from the belief that the people of the town ought to have a critical say in the specific development applications that will affect the physical quality of their community. And that is my statement.
I thank you, sir, for your... I don't want to call it testimony, but I appreciate you taking the time on short notice to come up with compelling comments for us to consider as part of our process. And I hope you have a lovely dinner.
I would just like to jump in and say, thank you again. Thank you so much. But a lot of the comments that you said, I think that we have discussed many of these ideas in going forward. And we did realize, I'm glad to hear that you were formerly chairman of SBRAB. And what seems to have happened over the years is that, as you indicated, the SBRAB review came so late in the process that the applicant was so invested both financially and emotionally in the plan that they had already come up with, that it didn't give a lot of wiggle room for people. It became a, for negotiations, maybe I should say, that it became a yes or no issue by the time it got to the Planning Board. So, we think that having this, an early concept review is very high on our priority.
Good. I'm really glad to hear that, and it was like that. I mean, the Board at that time, this was, I think it was back in the 90s. We were pretty rigorous about, we would quote from the master plan in our reports too. But, you know, my wife used to say, you know, all you can do is like negotiate for a bike rack at this point, or nits the project altogether, which just seemed like unfair and mean. And, you know, it just created a kind of a bad taste in the applicants.
And as you may be aware, we are in the process of updating the master plan, which that process is kicking off now. So, it's going to be a very interesting time for planning in Princeton.
How does a member of the public be, how is one aware of like a draft? Or how do you know kind of how things are evolving, if you don't mind my asking?
Justin, do you want to?
So, I'll start in reverse. We expect to have it adopted in probably about a year, next May or next June. Between now, and we just started with our first.
Hey, that's soon in.
Exactly. But we just had our first steering committee meeting. It was last Friday. So, from there, we're going to get a better schedule of when those future steering committee meetings are going to be, and those are all open to the public on Zoom, when we're going to have open houses that are most likely going to be in person, when the Planning Board meetings are going to be at the end, as well as just other opportunities for input through an online engagement hub, maybe survey, paper surveys or online surveys, you know, me handing out flyers with QR codes saying, please, tell us what to do.
Great.
So, right now, it just doesn't seem like it's fully out there because it just started. But over the next year, I have a feeling you're probably going to get sick of me, so.
No, reach out. Reach out. I'm going to stay with you until I'm paged.
Thank you again for your comments. They're really spot on. We will definitely take them into consideration.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you, sir. Justin, Liz Cohen, who I suspect is David. Could you bring Liz and/or David over?
Yep, I've just promoted them to panelists. And as you noted earlier, we have about nine attendees here.
Very astute of you, Chair Quinn, to realize I'm not Liz.
Members of the public, if you would like to add comments about the site plan review process, now is the time. I know that there are eight others of you in the attendee function, and please raise your hand, and you'll be called in order. So, Councilman Cohen, thank you.
Thank you. So, I do want to support pretty much everything that Ron said. We did not coordinate before the meeting what he was going to say, but I think I really agree with him. I know that the idea of having the review be compulsory and early is, might be a problem from a legal standpoint, but I think it is the ideal if there's a way to do it. I wanted to add a couple of other just considerations. I think that, you know, one of the concerns I hear raised about design review is that it's subjective, right? That there, one person, one architect, you know, even one professional may disagree with another about what is good design. And for me, that's just emphasizes the importance of having a group like this because if you have one designer saying, this is a great design, anybody can say, well, that's just one person's opinion. But if you have three or four or five designers saying, we all support this, and we all agree that these two or three things need to be improved, then you start to move out of the realm of subjectivity and into something that can be relied upon, you know, by the Planning Board to help in their decision-making. So, I just want to, you know, wanted to emphasize that it's not an any contradictory to what Ron was saying, but it underscores what the importance is of having a body like this and not just letting staff, you know, do the design review where at best, you know, you have one designer who's the planner on staff who would be doing the review. And as good as they might be, there could be disagreement because it would just be one person's opinion. I also wanted to make a small suggestion, and I did an email to him about this. I think, you know, it's great that nine people showed up tonight, but you're not getting a really broad cross-section of public opinion on this topic. And if this subcommittee has not already reviewed the council deliberation, you know, we had a lot of public input at those meetings as well. And I think there are people who couldn't attend tonight, who would have liked to have attended, who did make comment at those other meetings. And I think it would be great for this committee to review the, you know, the video of those council meetings to get that additional public input on the matter. And then the last thing I just want to say is to say what design review is not. It is not aesthetic review, although in some cases, there may be aesthetic comments. It is not stylistic review. It's not saying that this should be, this design should be one style or another style. It's a little bit hard to describe exactly what it is, but like the Supreme Court and obscenity, I know it when I see it. And I think that any professional designer would say the same thing. It has to do with efficiency. It has to do with simplicity and understandability. I could go on, but I think that there are a lot of things that go into design, and it's just really important for the public to understand that this board, whatever this entity is that we're talking about reconstituting, is not an aesthetic review board. It's a design review board, and we need to educate the public about what design is as best we can.
And ourselves. Because, you know, one of the things that, you know, has been drilled into us by council, council with an S, is that any kind of board like this is going to need standards that they're going to have to follow. And I believe that was one of the issues with SBRAB is that they were working without well-defined standards for what constituted. Yeah, I mean, I think you probably have a difference of opinion on that.
Yeah, I mean, I thought the standards were actually pretty good. You know, and they had gone without challenge for 30 years or so. So, anyway, but one can differ.
Yeah, but I, you know, I do hear you on that. And thank you for the comment about going back to the council deliberations. That's a great idea that I haven't done yet. I listened in that evening as people were giving their comments, but I should go back and revisit it.
Thanks. Yeah, I personally attended the ordinance adoption meeting, and I don't know whether, was there any public comment at introduction?
I don't think so. We typically haven't been accepting comment at introductions, and I don't think there was on this one.
Okay. And David, I would, Councilman Cohen, first of all, thanks for taking the time out. I know you have a lot to do.
You can call me Liz.
If you, if in your making the rounds, if you come across someone who wished that they could have been here tonight and has thoughts to share, please encourage them to write to us. They can write to us through Justin in the planning office, who will then forward to the members. I know that this is not a, you know, it hasn't been terribly well-publicized. And I know that a lot of people would probably like to take a Thursday before a holiday weekend off, but we do truly want to hear from anyone who has a perspective. So, please encourage them to write to us via Justin, who will then forward it along to the members.
I'll be sure to do that.
And I'll also just throw a plug for Access Princeton too. If you want to email, and you don't know my email, or you don't want to go to our website, accessprinceton@princetonnj.gov, they do a good job of sending me things that are related to our work.
Great. Thank you very much, David.
Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Lisa Levine has her hand up.
I'm moving over now. Be over in just a second.
Hi, Lisa.
Hey.
Good to see your big bass fiddle in the background again.
Yeah, that is Zeke.
The coolest Zoom background ever.
Yeah.
Mine's upstairs. That's my, anyway.
I hope you use yours more than Zeke uses his. He's pretty much gone electric at this point. He sits here in his former bedroom. So, yeah, thanks for opening this up to the public. And for those who know, I was vice chair to Louisa Clayton's chair of SBRAB at the time that it was disbanded. And we did make statements to council, which I agree that, you know, going back and just listening to Bill Wolf, the many statements that were made, just to see what it was that we felt we really contributed to the whole process that went beyond what staff provides for the applicant. And one of the things that, like David touched on, is the multiple multiple suggestions and ideas that are brought forth is important and that, you know, we didn't always agree 100%. So, you know, you're always going to have some people say, you know, disagree with an approach. And, but that's all valuable to the discussion. And I'm also a member of the PEC. And one thing that we always lament is our inability to have a dialogue with the applicant. And SBRAB, having that dialogue was super valuable for the whole process. And not always, there are always applicants who are steadfast, and the lawyer will insist that they don't have to make any changes. But a lot of people, you know, want to listen to what we had to say, and that dialogue would create, you know, a better design in the end. And some changes, I will say, bear lane. I know the applicant was really appreciative. That, I don't even remember what the issue was at the time, but at the end of the evening, he thanked us, you know, and really was ready to maybe not 100% make the changes, but certainly look at what we said. And so, you know, whatever concept review, again, you know, the time when changes can be made fairly fluidly, that discussion is super, super important. So, just want to plug that part, that value to having that, and also that having a group of citizens apart from, I don't want to call it a party line, and sort of a negative connotation, but if there's a certain approach that staff generally takes, or, you know, it's a party line type of thing, there may not be other things are looking for. There may not be other things that are kind of brought out more publicly as issues that could come up. And just even the bandwidth of staff is only so wide. So, having another group of professionals, and even not professionals, just people in the community. You don't have to be an architect, a planner, an engineer to be able to look at something and say how this is going to affect our town or a certain neighborhood or whatever. And of course, having to work within the confines of the master plan, of the climate action plan. Obviously, we just touched on, you need some kind of parameters of mission. So, I think that's it. I just wanted, and I would hope that you would listen to the statements that were made because I think it would be pretty informative. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. I know I will, I will take the suggestion and go back and listen to the public testimony. And I would just repeat what I said to Councilman Cohen. If there are people who would like to share in writing, feel free to send. Um, there, feel free to send any comments to Justin.
Okay, I, I talked to Louisa today and I know she was not able to attend tonight, so she knew I'd do that. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Other members of the public. Will give you five seconds to decide. Oh, Marina. Can you bring over Marina Rubina, please, Justin?
Yep. It's happening right now.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Um. As Ron said, it was not a lot of notice, so we scrambled and um, tried to get thoughts together, but um, thank you for hosting the meeting. Uh, definitely agree with the previous comments. Uh, I am one of the probably only current or the last sprab. Members who was in favor of dismantling sprab. Uh. And the reason for me was what people talked about, that it was too late in the process. And the impact that one could make was. It not substantial and it just created way too much stress. For everybody involved and it was very disrespectful to the amount of time. That local professionals invested in their sort of heart and mind and work. That led to no results, which caused a lot of former sprab members to basically quit. So. When you're planning this sort of. Also keep in mind that a lot of professionals invest a lot of time and it would be much more. Respectful to the people who put in the time if that impact was much earlier in the process. So on that point, I know David said that it may be hard to uh, make it mandatory. But in other places, they have incentives for doing things. So it's not mandatory, but creating incentives and the incentive, for example, could be. Where um, it's somehow related to. A lot of applications take a really long time to work through the process and it's important when you get in line. So if that maybe first meeting with sprab is where you get in line. Could be really helpful for people to start like, oh, well, you know, for me to get in line, quote unquote. I would attend this meeting very informal. And then at that early stage, I would try to promote and ask people to bring options. Because I think that would be really helpful because it al- already sets up. A situation where they're not set on one thing. Right? Like if I have to bring two or three options that work for me. It puts people into like, okay, well, it has to be early on, but I haven't decided. Right? So that could be one. Very, very, very early on in the process to have feedback for people. That could be one way to go. Uh, so my other comment. Is um, they're used to, so what the process that was. Partly causing issues with. Um, the landloose law is deciding on the applications. That were pretty minor. So. One would, it would be really great if you guys, I don't know if this is the job of this committee or another committee to think about. When there are very simple applications, you know, very minor site plan, no variances. For what is the process? What do those people do? Again, rather than wait eight months in line. For a application that is not. You know, requiring any variances. That creates a hardship for a lot of people. So. Thinking whether it's crab or whether it's the subcommittee or the planning board or, or where do those people fit? And I'm hoping that once we have the master plan updated and the zoning is updated, there will be more applications. They're actually compliant. Right? We used to not have a lot of things that are compliant, but. If we start having things that are compliant, it would be really great if there's a very clear process. Oh, appliance application, do, 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 do. Justin abused it. Justin was done or. You know, what is the process? So that, those are my two comments and then I'm, if you have any questions or. I could share anything from being on scrap recently. I'm here if you need me.
Well, thank you. Uh, you know, uh, again. We, we've been thinking, you know, we've had a lot of different thought process. We've met in previous meetings. Uh, we've met with the uh, the planning board council, the municipal council uh, to get the legal background. On this stuff. We've met with uh, with Justin and with Michael LePlace, the former planning director. Of Princeton and then we had another meeting with the land use engineer and zoning. Officer. Um, and there's been a lot of ideas that have been kicked around and I'm grateful that a lot of those ideas that we've. Uh, thought of have been brought up by the public tonight. So it seems like we're on a, a pretty much of a uh. Similar path and you know, one thing that I will say is that. Um, you know, you, you just said, you know, whether something is major or minor, you know, one of the ideas that. Uh, was kicked around and again, we haven't decided on anything, but if a. Project comes in under a certain number of square feet and has no variances, then it's just a minor site plan and it doesn't even really have to go. Before the planning board. Uh, for approval.
Right. I don't know what the right answer is. I just think that it's those and.
And we don't yet either, so.
Yeah.
But it sounds like you're thinking about it and that's great because let's not forget about those people who. It, it's just, a- as you know, being on the planning board. It just clogs up the process. It just slows everybody else down. So having another way administratively through sprab or. Whatever the process is to move those, you know, on different tracks, for lack of a better word.
Exactly. And, and in some cases, we have been fortunate enough to have. Applicants come before the board with, with a concept plan. Um, usually it's just one, it's not multiple plans, but um, but at least they've come and they've listened to our comments. And then by the time that they actually go through the formal process. Uh, you know, you can see where, where the tweaks have been made or, you know, where sometimes more than tweaks. Uh, have been made in order to uh. To uh, take in the comments from, from not just the, the board itself, but from the public. We allow public comment at those meetings as well.
Yeah, I'm sure it, it's just if it's early enough and people invest a hundred thousand dollars in stormwater management, then they're like way more open listening to your suggestions, right?
Right. Exactly.
I know. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
If I, if I could just add on those concept reviews, those are uh, you know, allowed by our municipal ordinance. Um, that's something that I think this uh, subcommittee could maybe. You know, if you have any way to incentivize that or make that uh. You know, just more interest, more, more. Worthy for applicants to do. Maybe it's lowering the cost or, or something like that. Uh, I, I think that's not off the table either.
So I, for example, not to spend too much time talking, just recently realized that this was an option by reading about it and tap into Princeton. I'm like. Are you kidding me? This is an option? So uh, we're like, right now I'm working on a project that we're going to bring for concept review because we had no idea was an option. And also if we know that we could bring it and not wait eight months to be heard. That's absolutely critical about it because I can't sit here in front of a piece of tracing paper for eight months waiting in line, right? We have to like, oh, great. Would love to have this concept review. Here it is. Can we be heard in the next, you know, couple of months? Maybe it's like off schedule or maybe it's a subcommittee or. What people are looking for. Is feedback, savings on time and predictability, right? Like things that you could just have, okay, I meant I had. Preliminary concept review. They made these comments. I responded to these comments. Therefore. I could predictably move forward with this idea, hire, you know, civil engineer, all these things. It, it's sort of time and predictability are absolutely critical. Uh. So, yeah, yay. I literally just found out the concept reviews were available. I'm like, amazing.
Yeah, we actually, we, we have the forms for those on the same page as the uh, you know, where you'd go to get the site plan and everything. So if you want to steer people that way too, now that you.
I know, like, like.
Yeah.
Big giant button.
Marina, may I ask you a question? This is not necessarily specific to you, but you, you are an architect, is that correct? And you were on sprab, you know, and as we're finding, uh, as we're, you're working our way through this process in order to, to determine, you know, what, what. Uh, this uh, site review, architectural review, design review, whatever it's going to be, uh, is going to be. Were there many issues uh, with professionals who practice in town also being on a review committee? Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to put, you know, put you in a hot seat there.
Well, but I think. Basically, every single person who was on the committee lives in town.
Right.
By definition.
And we want people with experience.
And I. Clearly am biased, but I think it's absolutely critical to have architects. On this board and landscape architects preferably. And, you know, if we could get a civil engineer, I don't know anyone who lives in town, but. Uh, because you have to live in town and you have to be a professional. Most of us practice in town as well.
Yeah.
So you end up in that situation. I think it's a benefit, but I think the key is if it's way earlier. Right? Like when the feedback comes super early in the process where people didn't invest. You know, again, a hundred thousand dollars into fees and then they come and they hear, oh, well. You know. Right? So. That, it is a dilemma. Um. But. How else are you going to get around it? I mean, like, eh, people who practice in town and use this code every day are the people who actually. Know what's going on, right?
Right, right. So, you know, that's, that's one of, one of the tight ropes that we're, we're trying to, to walk in, in order to uh.
Right, right.
To turn the way forward.
Mm-hmm, right. And I think that it, these people are not dieting, right? That's why it's advisory. That, that's why it was called advisory because it was advice. It's just advice, as I said before, it's just, it was like. Advice too late is. Useless.
Right.
I would, I, I just want to point out for context that probably Julie's the only. Member of the planning board that remembers a time when there was a committee that was tasked for. Minor site plans that were fully conforming and it, it, it was, uh, we actually had to stop the process because. Uh, it didn't require noticing. And there were a lot of objections and by a lot, I mean a lot. Of objections for every application from neighbors who felt like. It was a sort of backroom deal. Uh, so just as we're trying to provide for. A transparent process, uh, a public process. In that review, I, I would just point out that our experience there was um. And, and not. By neighbors who felt that they should have a say before the planning board and um. Preferred that it be the full board and not a subset of the board at a daytime meeting. Um, not that I agree or disagree with that, but that is the reason why the board made a decision. Many years ago to stop that process. So I, I just offered that for, not for necessarily for debate, but just. I think because Julie and I are the, and we, while we were both on that committee.
Yeah, we were both on that.
And it happened during the, during the first sort of wave of, of teardowns, uh, when there was. A lot of objections to teardowns and um, it just became. I think better for everyone involved, including the applicants to. Uh, to have. Things go before the board. It's not to say that because of that experience and that decision that we can't. Come up with something, a hybrid of that, that might work. Um, I just wanted to fill in some context there. I, it predates Justin as well, so.
Well, my question would be to think about, so if somebody brings an application. And it's fully compliant. And it's relatively small or maybe, right, a relatively small application and it's fully compliant. Is it legally possible really to deny that application at the planning?
Well, I, I think we're.
The question is then to just finish that thought. I don't know the answer to that, but let's just say there's some answer to that, right? So if people came with a fully compliant application on a relatively minor project. The, the fact that there's a public hearing about it. From the public side looks like there's a way to. Impact change. So it's a little bit like we were on the site plan. Review advisory board where here we are pouring all of our hearts out and trying to do something about it. But it's just too late and there's nothing you can do. And it creates this, and you know, in our case, it was very frustrating. It felt kind of disrespectful because. You know, why did I just spend all this time researching, trying to figure it out, how to make it better? Well, there will be no change. I, it's like. I don't know. I don't know what is the answer, but if somebody brings a fully compliant project. That's something to discuss at the planning board. What? What is the process? Are you allowed to deny it? No idea. I have no idea.
Yeah, I, I don't think any of us here are qualified to answer that question.
That's a question for the lawyers, right?
Yeah, we, and, and we gave uh, we gave Mr. Mueller the night off for this, but it is. It's a question that we will ask.
Yeah, just for your, like, sort of thinking process because then you're putting people into that same frustration. That we were at sprab.
Okay.
And I'd like to, I'd like to circle back to Marina's idea about. Incentives for an early process because I think that. Everyone we've talked to has talked about, you know, go, getting involved at the concept review rather than later. And if we do have an incentive. Um, like you said, scheduling or some. Advantage, then. We really eliminate um, a lot of the problems that you're talking about.
Yeah, we want people to like line up and sign up for this. Right? We want them to be like. Me, first in line, right?
Speaking, speaking of people lining up, we do have some more people with their hands raised, so.
I don't know how to, how to, like, on.
I, I think Justin.
I could take care of that, yeah.
Okay, but thank you very much for your comments.
Thanks, thanks, uh, Ms. Rubina.
And I moved. Sorry, Mr. Glenn.
Mr. Kennedy, as promised.
Hey. Um, thank you guys and, and um, a- apologies for missing the first um, part of this. I had. Several conflicting Zooms this evening, but very appreciative of the thought you guys are putting into this and I. I'll say I listened to much of, I think I caught a, a good amount of what Marina just said and, and generally. Kind of agree with the sentiments that she made.
Ryan, excuse me, would you mind just introducing yourself for anybody who doesn't know?
Absolutely. Uh, Ryan Kennedy, um, do you need uh, a- addresses for the record?
No, no, we're not.
I'm, I'm a land use attorney at Stevenson Lee, uh, in the part of Princeton that is Lawrenceville. Um, uh, and um.
We accept your qualifications. We accept everyone's qualifications tonight.
Um, a couple of thoughts. One, I, I do. Definitely agree um, uh, you know, with the idea of, of promoting concept or streamlining it as, as a, as an early intervention option. I, I'll note that, you know, I feel like it's HPC Julie is, is kind of successfully moved people to that and. It's not through an ordinance change. It, that was almost really just through communication and, and, and um. Uh, you know, force of will, I suppose, or getting the word out that that's what HPC wanted to see and I, I. It's not universal, but I, I feel like you're seeing that a lot more and, and not through government action, but through. HPC getting the word out to applicants that that's the better way to uh, uh, approach things, so.
Well, and, and part of the advantage too is that instead of writing a very detailed report. Um, Elizabeth doesn't have to worry about a report. She just says, oh, here's the applicant, take it away. And so on the staff's point of view, it's really much better. To have a concept review than to go into full application.
Uh, completely agree. Um, particularly something that's so early that it, it, you know, many applicants will think it's, it's almost a waste of staff time sometimes to be. Digging in the weeds when, you know, weed A has been developed, but weed B isn't. So why are you looking at, you know, why are you wasting your time digging through that? Um, another note, I'll say, maybe just look for inspiration. I don't know how many carrots you really need to suggest people go into concept, but. Um, the, the former Meadowlands Commission had some very nice, back when they had their own zone. Um, the, the former Meadowlands Commission had some very nice, back when they had their own zoning. Had some very nice incentives for environmental projects. So like, for example, if you were to be lead certified at a certain level. You would get actual bonuses on their zoning. I'm, I'm not suggesting you give floor area, you know, if you come in for concept, but. But they had scheduling things and fee breaks and it might be a, a good source of, um, you know. Existing or previously existing code for how they incentivize things in their process. Um. The other piece, and I don't have an answer for this, um, a- and I agree with Marina that with the work that you guys are doing on. The new ordinance kind of um, the, the cleanup, working with your master plan. I think there's a lot fewer things that, you know, a lot more conforming applications now, or there can be than there were before. Um, but one tricky piece is that my understanding, both by ordinance and I think under the MLUL. Is that there's not really an opportunity for a concept like application for the zoning board of adjustment. And that becomes less of a, a need as your ordinance gets better, but there's a couple of, let's, a lot of. New, unlike I say innovative things, but good things that Princeton is doing with the overlays and ADUs. And, you know, if you miss those criteria by a little bit. A concept review doesn't help you because you're going to be before the zoning board. Um, and I don't have an answer for that and, and perhaps there could be some. Pre, pre-process and, you know, that puts a lot on Justin, you and staff to kind of carry the thought and the comment. When it gets to the zoning board. I know that's not your, you know, you don't vote on that. You're not advocates. You guys are, are here reviewing things on behalf of the town. So I don't have an answer for that, but, but I just wanted to bring up that it, there are some, up, some times where. That initial take you want to um, have looked at. Um, will actually direct which board you go to and, and, you know, I think I said this last week, you know, the planning board's not advisory to zoning and there's no way to get into. Um, and advisory, at least that I know of currently for something that, again, I, I'm thinking of a, an A, affordable housing overlay. Issue where it's really close, but uh, a, a D variance is, is needed for some, you know, reason that makes sense. Um, then that concept review process doesn't really help anybody because those folks aren't going to be part of that process. Um. And then the, the, just the, the last thing, you know, that's, that's the, you know, those are the, the complicated things and I, I think there's a. You guys are in the right direction on how to, how to um, allow applicants um. Um, to get good substantive advice before they've spent so much money and the inertia takes in and they, they're not really in a position to be able to afford to. Change things even based on really good, you know, often really good um, comments. Um. But then, yeah, I, I'm, again, uh, just piggyback off Marina and she, none of the answers here either. Um, and, and Tim, I, I see on, on, on minor site plans, I always, that was even when, when we were doing it through Sprab. I always had this concern because, you know, it's really, I often felt it was almost like recommending that we have to be stuck with two hearings. Um, because anyone could, could object for any reason. And then you back to the planning board and you've done it twice and mobilized your team twice and, you know, I personally lucked out and didn't have to deal with that. Very often, but it's a no questions asked, anybody saying anything situation and, and often. You know, there's some risk that even maybe someone missed something and it come back later and, you know, so, so that, that's, it's, that's difficult. But there are, you know, the other end of the, the spectrum of, from getting the complicated things, getting out in front of them is getting the simple things. Out of the way and, and maybe that's empowering Justin and, and his team a little bit more with administrative waivers. I mean, I, I, I'm sensitive to Tim, you know, what your, the, the thought was with the subcommittee perhaps in the past is. You know, looking like things are in the back room and that's, that is, that is tough. Um. Um, but there are probably additional categories of things. That maybe can be done administratively and, and perhaps that takes some of the weight off. Um, and, and, or, or um, puts them in a, a different accelerated category that even if they do go to the board. There is a shortened review that they don't have to review every, um, every particular detail. It could be, it could be truncated in some way. Uh, cause I, I see both end of those spectrums being the difficult things right now. It's the, the big projects that you're too far by the time you've, you know, inertia sets in. And then the really simple things. I, I had a, um, a couple of years ago, uh, unfortunately, the difference. Uh, and, and in the parking requirements, whether you're serving coffee or tea, change the number of parking spaces you need. And by changing from coffee to tea, um, we needed a parking variance and, and um. Ultimately, this coffee or tea, I don't even remember which way it was going, but by the time we got through that process, the, the business wasn't viable anymore. Um, and, you know, ultimately it's something that, that spoke for, you know, spoke for some kind of, you know. Accelerated ultra minor process. Uh, I don't necessarily have any suggestions there either. Um, but, you know, a, a category that's worth focusing on, because there are some things where. Eh, eh, and I think a lot of people would perhaps choose if they were off the shelf. Similar to what's being done with, with Stormwater, where here's a series of off-the-shelf solutions that you can kind of pick from. If in some of these common situations, you did have kind of off-the-shelf solutions, like, look, if you agree to A, B, and C. You do need this variance, but if you agree to these things, we're going to put you in a different process, one that you're familiar with and can control. Um, and um, not, you know, I think a lot of people would, would ultimately choose something. Either simpler or give up a lot of things to not have to go through a longer process and, and there, there's an opportunity for some, from some carrots there, so. Thank you. You know, I absolutely appreciate that you guys are putting a, a ton of thought into this. Um. And, you know, certainly, I'm sure myself and colleagues in the land use community are, are absolutely. You know, um, maybe I was excited as Marina was to share their thoughts, but very excited still nonetheless to, uh, to share. Um, and, and again, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
I would incentivize tea personally.
Uh, that, i- if I could just mention something and I'm trying to listen more than talk tonight. I already had my day with this subcommittee. Um, but I do just want to point out for people that don't attend the HPC meetings, and Julie can probably back this up. There's a natural incentive to the concept review in that when you come back for your hearing. It, there's less, you know, it's less like pulling teeth, uh, whether it's just in terms of time. Because the, the HPC has already seen the application and they understand what's going on. They don't need you to, you know, redo everything, or the things that they might have said, uh, were ironed out the first time and brought back, so. That obviously bumps up whatever your chances were to an even better one. Um, and, and, you know, just familiarity, uh, for the neighbors, for the public, for the staff, uh, as Julie kind of mentioned, so. Uh, I, I really do think that is a good model for the concept review and, uh, something we might, you know, especially with Julie's expertise. Uh, or something you might want to incorporate somehow.
Well, the, the other thing I want to bring up that Ryan just mentioned is that, you know, we do use administrative approval in HPC. Quite often now, we're dealing with districts with three hundred and, like, Witherspoon Jackson has three hundred and fifty, four hundred. Houses, so, I mean, there's tons of stuff that people do that don't rise to the level of a, a hearing. But there may be issues that are the same with the planning board where, you know. There could be clear avenues for administrative review. Um, that, you know, haven't been explored.
Uh, uh, thank you, and uh, I see David Cohen has arrived. I, uh, now we know his plan was to get two bites of the apple, unless this is going to be Liz, so could you bring, uh. The person identified as David Cohen over.
He looks familiar.
The speaker formerly known as Liz Cohen.
Very sorry, I am not, I did not raise my hand again to express my own opinion. I wanted to just comment on a few things that other speakers have said. First of all, uh, as to whether one can deny a fully conforming application. I want to remind those who were around for it of the zipper lot. Uh, application for subdivision, which was deemed conforming by Derek. And which was denied by the planning board, uh, based on advice from Jerry Muller. At, eh, you know, he found a section in the land use, um. Uh, provisions that, uh, empowered the board to, uh, to take that action, so.
And, and that, that began life at the minor, at the minor subdivision. Or at the minor site review committee as well, so.
So I just, I wanted to provide that answer to Marina's question. Um, in terms of the question of local professionals practicing. Uh, that would, that Marina was discussing and serving on these boards and whether there's a conflict. I just wanted to point out that, you know, the rule is that, uh, for, for the planning board and for council. The rule in the state law is that. Um, a member of council or the planning board cannot represent a client before any agency of the municipality. Well, the point I'm trying to make is we have many, many architects and. You know, landscape architects, designers, whatnot, who work um, as junior. Uh, members of, you know, junior designers, junior project managers for design firms in town. And any one of them can serve on these boards because none of them signs the drawings. They don't uh, interact with staff when their application's coming. So I think that the, the um, field of possible. Members for, for this reconstituted um, design review advisory board. Is, is much broader than what Marina made it sound like, where, you know, we've got. Ten local architects who work in town and, you know, none of them can serve on the board because they. Uh, interact with staff, so I just wanted to make that point. And then the third thing that I wanted to con- uh, comment on is this uh, question of concept review for zoning. That um, that Ryan was, was bringing up. And actually, that was one of the great things of that sprab, was that it provided design review for both the planning board and for the zoning board. And while we do have in the ordinance, the possibility of concept review at the planning board. For planning board applications, we have nothing for zoning board, having gotten rid of sprab. But if there were a new uh, site plan review advisory board, they would provide that function. And clearly, they're not going to guarantee the results at the zoning board, neither do they guarantee the results. At the planning board. Neither does concept review at the planning board guarantee the results. At the planning board with full application. Concept review is never a guarantee of results, but. Good suggestions and compliance with those good suggestions will help. Any applicant get their approval either at the zoning board or at the planning board. So I just wanted to make those three points. Great.
Thanks, David. And, and we talked briefly about, um, about the possibility of. Graduate architect students, uh, participating in a design review process and. I think you, your thinking was that there's not enough experience there. As opposed to a junior member of a firm. Can you just confirm that since it was a, it was a private conversation that we had?
Yeah.
Months ago.
Yeah, I would, I would confirm that I would still, still feel that way, that, you know, to get. Students at the university to participate. I mean, you'll get some great ideas, but um. You know, you'll also get a lot of unrealistic, um, sort of pie in the sky suggestions. And I think it's good to have people who've got their great feet on the ground after a few years of practice in the real world.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to point out also Ron's suggestion of really paying attention to the master plan as a guide. Because those principles should kind of roll throughout.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you, you ra- raised that Julie, because one of the things we've talked about in the update to the master plan is actually to create. Uh, design element of the master plan, eh, its own element, which I think would be super. Helpful, and whether it's an urban design element or an architectural design element or whatnot, and I'm sure it's not. Covered in the proposal, Justin. They're not planning to create one for us, another, another uh, entirely new element of the master plan, but I do think. That that would be absolutely the right way to come up with design guidelines. That would get, would, would um, inform the work of this committee.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, David.
Thank you. And if, if we see your granddaughter's name in the, in the attendees queue, then we'll know you're really. You're really working around. Your chief of staff. Thank you.
And I've moved over, uh, the next person with their hand up, Heidi Fichtenbaum.
Hi, Heidi. Can you put your camera on, please?
Unmute.
There you are.
I did it. Okay, how's that? Good?
Perfect.
Okay, um, hey, thanks for having me. Um, I'm really interested in this. I was really disappointed when Sprab was disbanded. Um, you know, I understand that there are, you know, uh, complexities for sure. Um, the thing that I see and, and because the, I'm on the environmental commission and the environmental commission also does. Uh, development reviews. Obviously, looking at just, you know, sort of the environmental aspects of a, of a development. But being also a, an architect, um, it's a little bit hard for me to look at those plans and. Um, not think about sort of some of these bigger site plan issues. And what, what I see over and over, especially with the larger. Development applications, sort of the more major development applications. Quite often, there, um, and, and really you're looking at sort of the civil engineering site issues. You haven't really even gotten to the building design piece of the puzzle yet. Um, maybe wait by the time you get to planning board. But I think that one of the functions that Sprab can play and what is so vital. Is again, this early, being much more early in the process. It's one of the things that the environmental commission struggles with. Um, by the time we get the projects to review, it's pretty far down the road. It's real hard for us to get them to make any substantive changes. Um. Is, is that very often what I see is there is no site concept. So what does that mean? It means there is no idea behind the site plan. Other than, let's see how much stuff we can fit. That's it. I see that over and over again, and sometimes surprisingly, you know. Something will be written into the zoning that says, hey, you can't put the parking in front and then the applicant will come and. The parking's right in the front of the building, you know, so it looks more like a strip mall. Than what we're trying to get in Princeton, which are, you know, walkable tree-lined streets or whatever, right? That's what, that's what we're trying to get. And so I think some of those, you know, more early reviews. And tying it um, closely to the vision of the master plan, whether it's. Um, just that whole um, uh. Issue of how people move through town, you know, whether it's walking, biking, cars, whatever. Public transit, right? Um. Or environmental issues and how many trees will this, this layout end up cutting down? Versus how many trees another? Will you have access to the sun? Um, is there a way to preserve more open space, you know? And to me, it's that kind of thinking that. Um, having a, a group like Sprab and maybe making sure that Sprab has. Representation from HPC, from the environmental commission. Um, where a little bit more uh, high level and global thinking is happening. Um, and, and that it's being compared, because after all, actually, one of the things that the planning board. Is supposed to, one of the very first things that they're supposed to decide is. Does it comply with the master plan, right? And um, you know, if your master plan is saying, you know, the environment is. the environment is important, that historic preservation, that embodied energy is important, that walkability is important, that we want to, you know, relegate cars to more of a secondary position in our, in our town, not that we're not gonna have them. And in certain districts, like the business district, you know, those kinds of vehicle transportation issues are more complex than they are in more residential areas, all of that. Right? This is why I think that that body is so important. I actually think that, I, I have to agree with David, that, you know, more junior architects, having people who have that training to understand, you know, what a concept is. This is a courtyard concept. Or this is a, you know, like, an actual idea is, is there in the site plan. And that they can explain it to you, right? They ought to be able to tell you in like two or three sentences what the whole concept behind the site plan design is. And get feedback on that early on so that, you know, you end up with some, you don't end up in these big fights later in the process. And I think, you know, it would be really important to educate the people in town to understand that that's the role of this body. So that when you come to give comments, you're not giving comments on a specific, like, tree type, right? You're, what we're looking at are sort of these big picture issues that relate to our master plan and our vision for our town. So, you know, I can't, I can't thank you enough for circling back to look at this and, and figure out a way to make it work. You know, I had an idea that, you know, in addition, you know, when we're looking at things that help to expedite, whether it's, you know, affordable housing overlay zoning, or, you know, I would love to see us have net zero overlay zoning, right? Where if you come to the town and you say, you know what? I'm building a net zero project, and that's part of the concept, and that's why the site is the way it is. Because I'm, you know, I'm gonna harvest as much of the sun as I can, and I'm gonna preserve all this open space and these trees and, you know, whatever it is that you're doing. And you can explain that, you know. I totally see the reason to give a project, a project like that some kind of expedited review or maybe even, you know, a square footage bonus. So that as, as Marina said, you know, people want to come. Anyway, thanks a lot for letting me jump in.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you. That was, that was great. And, you know, from my point of view, I just want to say, you know, I'm, I'm very pro having the community be part of this process in some way. And just, it's just a matter of figuring out, is it going to be through professionals on a, on a committee? Is it going to be direct input during a concept plan, let's say? But, you know, I also want, I also am cognizant of the fact that it could very easily devolve into a, not in my neighborhood, you know, being against any and all development that goes on. So that's a, that's a very fine line again.
Yeah, unfortunately, that comes up all the time. And.
And you want to be, you want to be understanding of their place. But again, we have to look at what's, what's best for Princeton as a whole.
Yeah, and that's why I go back to that master plan, right? If our land use plan says we are concentrating development in this sort of central part of town. If it says that, you know, walkability is, is paramount. If it says we need to preserve our street trees. You know, if these are sort of the main entry points of our town and we want those entry points to, you know, be gateways and really read as, you know, welcome to Princeton, right? Then, then the, then whatever we do there has to, has to support those ideas. And, and along those lines, one of the things that I think is so important, and I think it would really help people as, as that master plan gets looked at again, is using the right tools to understand the implication of the words. You know, measuring it. And there are lots of better planning tools out there that were never there when people were doing master plans back in the day, you know? And it was a little bit fuzzy and we were trying to say, well, we want to have you a beautiful town, you know, whatever. There are tools that, you know, measure the economics, the carbon, the water usage, the, it, it's amazing. And you can look at various scenarios with those tools, and it puts out metrics. You know, and it's amazing, it's, it's really informative. So, you know, I think that that would help people understand why we're trying to, you know, develop our town in a certain way. And furthermore, and that would help these concept reviews. And furthermore, I feel that for the vast majority of the public, words, they don't know what that means, right? They don't know what that turns out to look like. You can read something and it's this setback and this height and this bulk and this thing, and people are clueless until there's a rendering. And then they're like, oh my God, you're building that in my neighborhood, you gotta be kidding me, right? And so, and so I feel like what would really help the reconstitution of SBRAB or something SBRAB-like that did these concept reviews for planning board and zoning would be a master plan that had maps and more graphic materials so that you understand what do these words really mean? Pictures worth a thousand words, it's really true. And, and then I think the public would have an easier time. Not that there, there will always be people who are not happy and upset with it. But, and there are people who will not engage until they realize it's happening next door to them, and then now all of a sudden they're super engaged, right? So I know that will always be the case, but there are these other components that mesh with this idea of SBRAB and concept review that can make it more productive and more positive.
Thank you, Heidi. Members of the public, this is your last chance. Mr. Cohen, it's your last chance to join us again under an assumed identity. Well, if, if not, I'd just like to wrap up by saying thank you all to the people who took the time to come out and share the thoughts, several good ideas. I think that we hadn't fully discussed or discussed at all were, were brought up. And again, if you know someone who couldn't make it tonight, we will be accepting written comments that will inform our eventual report and recommendations to council. And I would urge you to keep an eye on the planning board for, plenty, at planning board meetings for updates to this. And also for updates to the master plan process, so.
And I'd just like to jump in and reiterate what I stated previously, which was that while there were many ideas that came up that we really hadn't gone into in our previous meetings, that there were quite a few that we have talked about. So I'm heartened about that, that it seems to show that you know, the, the mindset seems to be moving in the right direction. So thank you for that, and Julie and Alvin and Justin and, you know, everybody else who's been important to this, this series of ongoing meetings.
Thank you. I, I don't think we need a motion to adjourn, but thank you again. And you can end the meeting at your desire, Mr. Lesko.
Okay. Thanks a lot, everybody.
See you guys.